Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
No.
My vote is aye. Oh, July council meeting. Well, you want to go through your... Oh, no, that's next.
Because we already changed council meetings.
Okay. Oh, no, for July. Okay, no, I, okay. Uh, July council meeting, here's, here's what happened. Andy, uh, changed his June vacation date so that he could be at our June council meeting, which was a noble effort and we appreciate that. However, his son is shooting in the Nationals this year in July, which will be on our July council meeting date. So, in my mind, our choices are to change the council meeting date or to go ahead with the council meeting date and not have Andy there.
We have an assistant secretary.
We do.
Will she attend?
Oh, you mean Tara?
Yeah.
Anyone can attend if the council desires.
Yeah.
I think we'll just have somebody else attend.
Mom, I don't mean to be a stickler, but the borough code says either the secretary or assistant secretary.
I agree.
Will she attend? I mean, will pay her extra.
I don't care.
If we designated her as assistant secretary.
Something funny, Erica.
Yeah, paying people extra, why doesn't she...
Oh, yeah, she's an hourly employee, so we'll just have her come and she doesn't...
If you'd just calm it down a little bit, I said have her come in later in the day so that she can be here for the meeting. That's what I said, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, something be arranged because it's not a normal thing for her.
Right.
We could do that. Is Tara okay with that?
I will check with her. I'll just see if we wanted to get her in the council board.
Okay. All right, so I guess what I'm hearing is that we'll have a meeting if Tara can be there. So then I would entertain it, I guess I would really not be...
You don't need to do anything.
You don't need to do anything, so we're good. Okay, solicitors, you have that?
Um, I have, at the request of both the mayor and the borough council president, I was asked to research the authority of the mayor to enforce ordinances in the borough. And under the borough code, the, uh, the mayor has the duty to enforce ordinances. Interestingly enough, under the powers section, he doesn't have the powers to enforce ordinances. But the Commonwealth Court has, has interpreted that to mean that he has the authority and to the extent that a ordinance is enforced via criminal, sorry, summary of criminal proceedings, the mayor would have the authority to enforce those ordinances. There's no separate authority to enforce any of the civil ordinances that are enforced by civil summary matter. So, no zoning, no subdivision, no stormwater, those sorts of things.
Don't want them.
So, that is, that is, uh, the memo I passed out this evening, um, there's a court case from 2015 before the Commonwealth Court.
I am not qualified in order that I went to enforce any of that zoning stuff.
Anything else?
Um, the only I would, I mean, I'm gonna throw this out there. You know, this, your borough council meeting should be a business meeting. And in order to be fair to people who attend the meetings, you should probably have a lot of this business worked out. If you want to argue or talk or discuss, consider matters, you can always have a committee of the whole meeting where you just, you don't decide anything, you just hash all this stuff out and then say, we like to put this on the agenda. And I think various municipalities do that because they want to, they want to take, when they go to the business meeting, they have a business meeting. They go, they have, they have a motion for, to adopt or enact or whatever, they have a motion and a second and they go right down through the list. Doesn't mean you can't talk and say no or yes, but it allows the public and any professionals that are there from, like, if you're an engineer, whoever the case may be, you're on behalf of somebody, they can get in and out. Uh, it's just a, it's just a thought because your borough, your business meeting is turning into a committee meeting because you're doing a lot of negotiation and deliberation and discussion here. Not saying not do it in front of the public, I'm just saying you may want to separate the two so you have a meeting where you can get through business so that people who are here for business get in and out.
So the committee, the whole would be prior to our meeting if we did it?
Yeah, at some other date where you can kind of hash this stuff out if you want information from Andy, you can get information from Andy, you can have it together so you'll have all that information before the borough council meeting instead of having him get ambushed or requested things at the last minute and then you can't act. It kind of holds up business. It's just a suggestion, you don't have to do it.
Are you saying on an individual basis or...
No, as a committee.
As a whole.
We have our own meeting.
You get together and have a separate meeting where you don't have action items on the agenda. You just put discussion topics.
So more than four members of council could still be there?
And we would advertise it as a separate meeting, yes.
Oh, okay.
Committee meetings under the sunshine law should be advertised as required, the same thing for borough council meeting. It makes you do two nights, but it makes one of your nights a little shorter than the other. It, it's just a suggestion.
How, how does that differ from just having a continuation?
You can do a continuation meeting, but what it lets you do is you're not forced to make a decision the night you're discussing and deliberating all these items. And what it does is it gives you the freedom to kind of talk about these issues, hash them out.
Before you vote.
Before you vote, and then if you want additional information, you're not acting on it that night. You have it, you have some time to get that information. Again, it's just a, a suggestion and consideration to maybe move your borough, your, your business meeting where you're voting along a little faster. It lets you get additional information where people aren't, don't feel like they're on color on the carpet to make a decision without all the information. Because it seems like that happens fair amount.
So how do we transfer, so, so when we have the committee of the whole meeting, we don't really decide anything except among us?
Yeah, you just say, we'd like to put this on the agenda for the business meeting. And then that's where you act on. And, and the public can come and they can sit here with the committee meeting, but at least they know what they're getting into.
Would that be a time to discuss like the financial report?
Yeah, absolutely, if you have those questions, yes.
Okay.
Or, or you could, we could figure out which...
How many times we want the community center cleaning?
It, it seems, again...
Or even the, which parts of the vehicle code go in the, you know...
Right, it lets you work through some of the actions you're gonna take instead of...
Like, sure, Glen Rock has an ordinance committee that...
Well, you can, you could also do separate committees if you wanted. You could have a community center committee, an ordinance committee, you know, if you want to do that, sometimes...
This would take, if you all encompass it.
Right, if you all want to be there and want to hear the same information. And then if you have an auditor you want to come and ask questions to, you ask them at that time. If you want additional information before you act at the next meeting, you have that opportunity. I'm not looking to make any more night meetings for anybody, but instead of having you go on our, what, third hour, you're halfway through your agenda, maybe it frees up some of that time. That's just, just a suggestion. Nothing legal, just a suggestion.
Managers report.
Do you have the January twenty twenty-three managers' report in your pocket tonight? Any questions?
What is prepared twenty twenty-two proportionate share report and supporting data for Shrewsbury and Roberta?
The operation of the sewer plant.
Can I get a copy of that, please?
It's not finalized yet.
Well, it is finalized, could you email me a copy, please?
All the council will get a copy.
Sounds good. And then I haven't heard anything about the people that were here at Summit talking about their trash. There's been no talk, and I think just like with the roach infestation on Wanita, it's been like not a lot of information coming about how that's coming along. What is the resolution for the people at Summit and their trash?
Waiting on that community to decide on how they would like the collection to change. And there's been no feedback from the community other than from the HOA president, who asked about sizing and asked about additional pictures of the smaller cans. And there's been communication with, uh, I would say maybe five to eight residents that switched cans and that's it. There's been no other follow-up from that community as a whole.
Do they know that you're waiting on them?
We put the bow in their court. I was there to meet them.
At what meeting?
At the summit with, um...
HOA president and the...
With you and the HOA president and members of the community.
When was that? After they came?
No, that was before.
Yeah, it was after them.
That was before, that was before they came, when we gave them the, the options.
But the options haven't changed. They could go with a smaller can, they could put the cans in a corral, or they could get a dumpster.
And that would have been, correct, mentioning that in the minutes, it was just briefly that she came and she spoke about the problems. Well, it would have been good to have the three options that she was given in the, in the minutes to know what their options were, um, going forward. Uh, the senior center, the defibrillator, did you speak with him about having it mounted on the first floor somewhere?
I spoke with, uh, a vendor about purchasing the units to try to get pricing to see and then working with the senior center to pick out their locations. If they are notable to do theirs or if we need to purchase an additional one, if they need to have theirs within a certain vicinity of their...
It doesn't sound like theirs was mounted anywhere, it was in a office along the way.
I think we need to keep those separate. I really think we need to have our own, and perhaps we can look at the, did you contact anyone from the fire department?
I did, I made sure that we, if we are getting quotes, that we're getting units that are compatible with their, uh, heart monitors so that it's a smooth transition if there were an emergency.
Yeah, smooth transition, but easy for the average person to use.
Yes.
Not professional.
No, that mean they, they talk you, walk you through everything.
Yeah, it's fifteen, I know what, or, okay. Yeah, I, I really think that we, how expensive, have you come back with any prices?
It depends on the models, I mean, you can, anywhere from per unit, two to five thousand, depending on what's needed, obviously what...
Two thousand?
Per unit?
Yeah. Really? Todd, you guys have AEDs up at your building?
Yeah, we have two, we pay twenty-five hundred a piece.
Okay, well, that sounds...
And they, I mean, they have a shelf life, the pads need replaced at times, and the unit itself has a real shelf life, so it's not...
Couple of D cell batteries, maybe? I'm kidding, I think that's a necessary issue, definitely.
And it was stated in February of twenty-two that the new Equinox would have the doors marked New Freedom Borough. Those doors aren't marked. And I saw a yellow public works vehicle in town today and the side of the door was so faded with the emblem, you couldn't even really tell what it was. Can those all be updated?
You can run it a highlight?
No, the only additional thing I wanted to add is recorded at the last meeting that we had the radar speed signs installed on the home label drive and that we were going to reverse, uh, their position so that you had, basically the meters had a longer run at the sign. Pulled the results for the last couple of weeks, the eighty-fifth percentile speed, twenty-six and twenty-seven miles an hour. So, they're still average speed of, of fourteen and twenty-one miles an hour. They're still well within the range and, uh, you know, it appears at this time that maybe the signs are working, maybe there's actually not a speeding, uh, problem. It's quite a bit of, uh, traffic, obviously for residential community, but...
Now, can they, they can see the signs, though, so it's an incentive for them to slow down?
Yes.
Am I right?
It's just like, it's just like the ones they have over on phone right now.
Okay. I thought it was, well, it should be, they were going together.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So they may be helping with the speeding problem just being there, which is good.
Are we doing anything for Gary's retirement?
I think we'll probably do something.
Thank you for the newsletter, I think it had a lot of good information. I know you really put a lot of work into it.
It's really cool.
I think we need to continue that, you know, for those people that can't do savvy citizen. And I think we got a good, um, LinkedIn for having our savvy citizen, um, what was that? Kind of a spotlight on New Freedom for having savvy citizen. And I, I saw there, you know, we're always getting more and more and more. And I think, you know, we as a council need to make sure we're out there promoting that when people say, well, I didn't know about this, I didn't know about that. I can't tell you how many people I've taken their phone and gone to the Apple store or whatever and put it on, set it up for them and off they go, they're happy. But I think that's, that's important, all those are important.
Mr. Ray.
Well, you all have your police reports, um... We have our district reports, you can see where we fall compared to everybody else with, um, incidents, um... Fire Department, they're just on the verge of having a new truck. Uh, it's all lettered, we're just waiting, I guess, for delivery. They've, they've checked everything out, they're currently having, um, classes on that, and they're also going to update the new CPR, uh, first aid course. Uh, once I find out when that's gonna be, the first one had, was canceled for lack of interest, uh, well, not lack of interest, just they didn't have enough people at the time, um, to continue, but they're gonna do it. And I would, uh, encourage anybody, um, here at council, I'll let you know when that is and we can all take that. I think it's gonna be free of charge if you want the certificate, it's ten dollars. Uh, I don't know if, might be the same guy that did yours here, because all of the employees are now...
Yes.
Certified and guarded?
Yes, first aid and CPR.
I think that was an excellent move to do that, we had talked about that for a while.
Do we know why Southern School District was up? PPU was?
P, uh, PPU or...
Twenty twenty-three running, nearly running too, which I guess it's just early for January.
No, I do not know, but I could get ahold of Officer Hanson if you, and get back to you if you...
I was just curious as to why. Something happened. I'm sorry?
So they're running differently?
Yeah.
So that's not just during the...
Right, you're right.
Yeah, they went on in with the new addition. Um, I know they've had, um, a lot of problems with parking and people, you know, not obeying the, the parking over there. Um, but I'll ask, I'll ask Officer Hanson, I've, uh, talked to Chief, uh, about a couple of different things. As I said, Kirk, Kirk Holloway is now the president of, um, the, uh, fire, um, company. Uh, I did a squaring in a couple of weeks ago of all the new officers and members, um, at their meeting. I do go to their monthly meeting when I'm a member. For the... I can't find my police report, I'm sorry. Do you, do you have your copy, Erica?
No.
Sorry. What went on at the police commission? I think there was a stabbing, we've got the new vehicle in, which is a traverse. That was, we did approve that, um, here we go. Shrewsbury, there was a major oil spill on the road in there, which caused a lot of problems, uh, somebody's getting a nice fine and having an insurance claim on that. There was a, um, the daycare. Um, I'm gonna remind people, even if you're women especially, well, women, uh, if you're pulling up someplace, I don't care if you're going to Rutter's, you're going to the daycare to pick up your kid, don't leave your pocketbook in your vehicle, even if it's locked. They had a number of instances, instances in Shrewsbury, um, where women were leaving their purses in their car, somebody was breaking the window, jumping in, grabbing the purse, off they go, um, and, um, that, that, nobody wants to see that happen. So just be diligent, and some of them were just leaving them in, running in for a minute, not even locking the car. Uh, we do have a new officer, the, at last I, I, uh, meeting, we just were waiting for him to have an eye exam, I'm sure that's already been done. That was supposed to be done, I think, last week. We did have a, a surplus, but we had to transfer, uh, seven thousand dollars over to our general fund, um, from the reserve fund, um... Attorney fees, you'll notice if you look at the, um, accounting, the attorney fees had gone up because of an incident, uh, within the department where we had to hire outside attorney, that's, we're done, we're approved for the twenty twenty-three budget, still working with, um, Glen Rock on where they want to be and what they want to do. I don't, you, I don't know if you can speak to the, the meeting that you have with Glen Rock, has there been another meeting?
No.
They, are they not showing up or we just not having meetings?
Meeting with Glen Rock?
Yeah, we, we had the, the Glen Rock, the, of the, um...
There has not been any meetings.
Okay, it was with Sarah, um...
With pause.
I'm tired. But, well, okay, so there was a meeting, so we don't have any update on where they want to be. We, we know where they want to be, but we've passed on the council's lack of approval to just give in and follow the standard, you know? That, that's really about all I have.
Engineers report.
For the VFW, what is the traffic scoping application?
With Penn Dot.
What is that?
It's a, it's anytime there's a driveway that's entering a state road, uh, there has to be a scoping application and Penn Dot has to review that application and determine the next steps.
Is that to where the traffic study has to be done or not, is that what that means?
It appears it's a traffic study. Yeah, it's just the preliminary before there be any additional requirements that would be put into place.
And only Penn Dot says that they have to or they do not have to?
That's correct, it's a state road.
On the North Second Street Stormwater, awaiting further direction from the borough staff, what, what are they waiting for?
Whether to proceed with the project or not. At this time, we have not had any additional complaints, so we've kind of put that one back and prioritize other projects.
And on Franklin Streetscape, there's same thing, awaiting direction, is there anything there?
No, we're not doing anything with that project to this point, so additional funding opportunities arise.
And then the same thing from Archie Goodfield, Master Plan, same thing?
That's what we discussed earlier today, yes.
And the VFW, the scoping meeting, is that going to be this month?
That's up to Penn Dot.
And R and M New Freedom LLC, has that staff meeting happened?
No.
Is it gonna happen?
That would be, it would be reflected in your salary report.
Do you know when it's gonna be happening, is there a date set?
No, that's up to the developers and then their, their updated plan.
Was the inspection of roads done on two six and two seven? I think they did.
There was work to look at the twenty twenty-three projects, yeah.
Did we hear back at all?
No.
What they saw?
No, it was just to get our prioritization list for the twenty twenty-three projects.
Yeah.
Borough water? Is there any resolution to the asbestos that was in the water from...
Oh, it was... It actually was not in the water, that was the, that was basically an error when the readings, it really...
Was that also York water?
Oh, it was York water.
York water.
Do we test for asbestos in our water?
Last year we did.
Last year, it's not done monthly or regularly?
No, DEP sets standards from when it keeps, I think it's like every nine years or something like that, or seven years, it's a while that they go between the...
You're using our wells and so forth, don't you think that's something we should be testing for?
If you want to spend the money, you want to get. I mean, DEP tells us when to do the testing, so...
Or we ever had a problem with it?
No.
Well, that's not something that could, it's not something that naturally occurs.
Right.
Right. Well, you say this seventeen MFL is a testing error? It wasn't accurate?
Yeah, if you read, it says it was, it was an error by the...
Well, they don't know. Could have been.
And they took, Donnie, correct me, where they took another sample and it was nothing.
Well, a whole month later, they didn't test between December eighth and January twelfth? They had a hundred percent exceeded limit and they didn't do any testing?
Surface water is different testing than what groundwater is, I don't know what, how your quarter's testing, there's, you know...
Did you call to see if it was okay? I mean, ask any questions from this letter, did you, you know, they didn't test for a whole month?
You mean for your quarter?
Yeah, I mean...
I thought that their operators, they were saying that everything was fine. But you still have to put the tier, the notices out to the public, so...
Well, sure, but, you know, for a whole, a whole month and then we're not testing it, how do we know we're not getting it? How do we know during that month we weren't getting it? Because we get, uh, water every day from York Water.
Well, we all get...
It's the purpose of the notice.
Yeah, it's the purpose of the notice, and there's no action required in the notice and that they test, I mean, they're, everything is set up by DEP for testing, I mean, it's not...
Well, so it doesn't...
Ideally, you'd have the water be constantly tested, that's just, that's not what happens, so...
Does that water, that from York Water Company, we, because we do use our allotted amount every month. I know you go and measure and make sure that we're, you know, we're using...
Yeah, we take thirty, take thirty thousand gallons a month.
Does that go into the, um, tank up here? Does that go into the main tanks up behind?
Personally, I don't even think that water even reaches there.
Is that far?
It just goes right, does it go right into the lines?
What's that?
It goes right into the lines when you...
It goes right into the line and the system, so...
Okay.
It goes right into the line and the system, so it gets used up where you can get to the tanks.
Okay.
You know, we get thirty thousand a day.
Gotcha, I know you are diligent with making sure that we use what we're paying for. Waste water? When's next, uh, meeting date?
We tried to get more than January, but we couldn't get all the schedules to align. So what we're waiting on now is just feedback from Hopewell and Shrewsbury Township on getting their map of where they need those connections and where they could possibly need those EMTs. So that's an exercise.
But there's no, there's nothing scheduled currently?
Is that an open meeting to the public?
It's a committee meeting, it can be open, it's not anything, nobody's hiding anything. Just deciding on where, where to put, we need the map back and...
That's a committee meeting, where are the minutes for that committee meeting?
It's not a committee meeting, it's just a meeting of representatives from the different municipalities.
Who said it was a committee meeting?
Okay, well, I just clarified that, it said not.
Wrong words, so there's no minutes from these meetings about our treatment plan?
No, there's, we have agendas and we've been working together as a group. There's, nothing has been changed or, we're just trying to plan out the next steps as needed.
But nobody ever knows what those steps are? Because they're never told when the meeting is to attend?
That's my responsibility, and I have been reporting back and representatives from this municipality have been reporting back during these meetings and telling me what we're doing and the next steps.
Well, yeah, and then have a packet before us to vote for a two-plus million dollar thing that's dropped on us that night, I mean, just a bit more information, kind of what's, what's going on. Can we be informed of when the next meeting is, where it's gonna be? And after the fact?
It's, it's something, I'm asking for...
You haven't noticed yet, I like information. I like to know what's going on, that's, I mean, I don't know why that would be blocked.
I think that's really good, but that seems, again, like a day-to-day operation thing where I don't know that council members should, should be at these meetings.
I don't know why you would wanna block the council member from going to a, apparently an open meeting.
You'd have a quorum if you came to the meeting, I mean, that's, you know, that would be one thing. But I, I was surprised, actually, that we could have a meeting, that it would be public.
It's an open meeting, though.
That, that we could have a meeting before our meeting, so, yeah, that's kind of, that was kind of flew in the face of it, I... Well, the ones we're not voting on anything, it's just informational according to them. Yeah, but yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, we have three, we have Burnell, Dennis and myself on the committee and, again, working group, I guess. And, yeah, I mean, we, we're still waiting for information. I mean, if something happens where there's, you know, council needs to be involved, then of course we'll report, but...
I'm asking to be notified before the meeting, that there is a meeting, where the meeting is and at what time.
Let her know when the next meeting is.
Thank you.
Ah, zoning and code enforcement.
On the code enforcement, we haven't had an update since October nineteenth about photo one, purchase additional property or relocate vehicles. It's February.
And I recorded at the last meeting that the property owner cannot get a driveway cut into the property that they purchased due to ground hasn't, there was additional rain and hasn't froze, so they're waiting until they can get good weather to get a driveway cut into that property that they can move those vehicles.
See that there's been good weather. Can this, this is the record right here, can this be updated? Because I'm just looking at October. Updated that you have updated information when, when that was? So I guess we're just gonna give an unended compliance date?
No one seemed to have an issue with it.
It was either that, it was either that or we pay to have the roads wide, I think, in the rate? I, I think right now... We're just kinda cutting the rate. Yeah, he's trying, you know, he's... Everybody on Dickinson? He's trying to get it resolved, you know, the problem went away with him fighting with the neighbor across the street.
Okay, can we get this updated?
There's no, there's no...
From October, then. On photo four and five, it was closed because the plant was cut off at the base, but the plant wasn't removed from the house? Was it removed from the house?
No.
So even though it's cut, the base isn't gonna grow, but rodents are still gonna climb up that. Why was it closed if it wasn't removed?
Well, it's just hanging on their property, right? Is there an ordinance?
This is a cockroach infestation that they can still outside climb up and get out, up into the house.
What are they gonna climb up if it's cut off of the base?
Because it goes all the way to the ground, it's just like cut off, like, like that.
So what are they gonna climb up?
I don't know, maybe the railing that it's up against, I don't know. It's, it's there for them to, to get on, I don't understand why just cutting it so it's not growing, that's good, but how could it be closed if it hasn't been removed?
Disposed of. Is that something, I mean, their, their intent is to dispose of the rest of it, yeah?
How do we, do we even know what kind it is? Do we know that it's gonna grow back? They grow back? I mean, I don't...
Yeah.
Well, they'll have to, you know...
So it wasn't taken out of the ground, it's gonna grow back? And it'll grow back and attach to where they cut it off, I mean, there's a good way for them to get it up.
Well, they cannot allow it to grow back because it's invasive species, so we'll have to keep an eye on it.
Is there gonna be a dress that leaving it on the house? For the stump to grow up to be able to touch that, and there's their reway right back up?
I don't know how that would...
Anybody?
Donna, do we have an ordinance that says they can't have an ugly plant?
It's not, it's not ugly plant, it was there and it was part of the cockroach infestation problem, right? So if they've left it there...
I don't agree with that, a cockroach is gonna crawl right up the wall, they don't, they don't need a bush.
Then why did it have to be cut?
Because we got a complaint. It's an invasive species.
So now you leave the dead, ugly invasive species up the front of the house?
I'm just asking if we have something in the code that says we're allowed to tell them that they have to take it down?
They never satisfied the violation in the beginning to remove it, it's not removed, it's there.
But it's dead.
It's there.
I can tell you just, I know what this thing is, and I guarantee you, you'll have, if you're gonna get rid of it altogether, you're gonna have to dig it up.
Well, it's in a bucket.
If it's in...
Well, I thought it was in the ground.
But it looks sort of like some of it was...
Yeah, oh, maybe it is.
Yeah, cause that's...
Yeah, it's grown out of the ground, yeah.
Yeah, that, that, cause that...
If that was cut off at the base, well, we'll have to keep an eye on it. If it starts growing, they're gonna have to...
Yeah, cause you're gonna have trouble, that, that thing will come back all over the place.
But it was never removed?
When did they have to have it down by? And when, when did they have it down? Where are we?
December, we're in February.
December twenty seventh, okay, which was what, our minus twenty-seven degrees? I'm surprised they even got it cut. Is that that one? It's gotta be destroying a port route. Well, the neighbors, it was, it was underneath their, their shingles. And they went out and pulled it out from the shingles, some of it was growing through the water. And the neighbors went out and cut it, cause by all they can, but at this point, you know...
But no one's gonna pull it down?
Well, I mean... I haven't, I don't know. I, I haven't driven by it, for all we know, it could be down today. I'll drive by tomorrow, take a look, and if it's not, I'll report back here to the office. And they, you know, should have to do away with that because now it's just considered, I guess, rubbish, since it's a dead...
There you go.
It's a dead plant hanging on the... It's a fire hazard.
Yeah, that's spread out the street from my house.
Yeah, you can see it from the back door.
I can, I have to look.
Yeah. Anything else?
Uh, eight and nine, that is the twelfth. What is gonna happen? Because this was originally violation January twenty-third, it's worse now than it was in January. What's gonna be the resolution after the twelfth?
I believe you already know the answer to that question.
I, no, I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
She was leaving somebody else in the laundry?
Is there anything gonna be done? The hysteria was closed out even though it's still there, so I don't know what's gonna happen. It's, it's, um... That's been, yeah, ongoing. And then also, uh, it's actually the Summers Lane, January twenty-sixth, that's up in two days. Is that gonna move forward? If that, that's actually the one I was referring to, it is now within a foot of the road. It's worse.
His accumulation has gotten worse since we took that picture instead of better. Now he's got the back porch lost again, he's got the whole side of the, the back of the house, the side of the house. You can't even get a car in the garage.
On one side.
That's a fire trap.
Yeah. What is the resolution there? On the fifteenth?
Would you, to move forward with the next steps, is that behind any ordinance?
And that'll be sending it to the magistrate?
That's the next step, if violation is still there.
Okay. And then the, the last one for the loose dogs, she was given, I guess, a letter sent? So a letter was sent, but what happens the next time? Is just a letter is continuously sent or?
No.
We don't have this ticketing thing in system, what, what, what would be the second offense?
The letter is sent indicating that if they get another complaint that will file against at the magistrate office.
Okay, well, that doesn't say that here, so...
Right, if we're not including copies of every single letter that we send into the county.
Alls it says is letter sent regarding violation of allowing dogs to run at large park, that's all it says?
Right, again, office do the job that they were tasked to do.
Only, only because I have a personal interest, what do we, on ten and eleven, what do we consider to be debris in those pictures? I mean, he's, he's got, every time somebody chips, he's got, he's got people dropping off dump trucks. You can watch them, they, they pull in with a dump truck and dump the chip, wood chips. It's not a yard anymore.
And all of that is unenclosed storage, all those containers?
Oh, it's awful.
Storage.
Yeah, yeah, and look at, you can see the porch.
Is that what he's trying to accomplish?
Yeah, watermelons and, and cantaloupes, and he plants them in there. But every, now it's getting to the point where that's all there is. So how much garden are you allowed per acreage?
Well, there's a difference between a garden and a heaping pile of, of pine chips, which by definition under property maintenance could, is accumulation of junk and debris, rubbish and debris. Those piles meet the definition. Now, if you were to take those and spread them out at ground level, you could consider that a garden.
Or you could just consider it mulching your yard instead of growing grass, I guess.
The citizens of that community over there have suffered long over this. And there needs to be action and this needs to be addressed.
It's on there.
And it was on there last, this last summer, it was on there before that. It hasn't been addressed. Minimally, that minimally.
I would say decent notice, noticeable difference.
Well, the people that have to turn and live in that development don't feel that way.
Well, then they should report to the office.
They have.
Okay.
Hey, how many complaints have you received from that neighborhood?
This is the first one since last year when he cleaned up everything.
Okay.
I thought your wife sent one, but she never got a reply back.
Right, and that's what this is.
Oh, I had a mem, I had a community member approach me that came in. Because a community member came to me and they came in this office and reported it. So if this is his wife, then where's the community member that came to me that's reporting it?
That's a good question because we have no documentation.
Wow, they came right here to the borough office window, spoke right there.
I'm, I am gonna ask what it, just for future reference, what is the procedure when somebody comes, reports or complains and gives their phone number, email address? Isn't it the responsibility of someone here to get back to that person to let them know what...
There's a complaint form filled out if they come in, if they go online, they fill the form out, at the top of the form, at the top of the form, it clearly states that there's not gonna be a response, that your complaint will be documented and will be handled accordingly. It does not indicate that there will be a response from the person, that form is filled out.
I thought the ord, I thought we have an ordinance that, that any complaint must get a response.
International property maintenance code, absolutely not.
No, 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 it's not in that, but I thought we had...
But that's what the complaint's on.
You wouldn't want to be responding anyway, I mean, you, I mean, we don't, we don't even, not even supposed to be...
Well, thank, you know, we're sorry that you have found this problem, we're taking it under whatever and we'll be addressing.
And then how, how is the office losing complaints that walk in to this office? How is that?
Well, since you know everything, when was the complaint filed?
In the last thirty days.
Oh, okay, and when, when's the, when's the date of this letter?
You said that was his wife. So it's either his wife or it's the community member that approached me. It can't be both of them because it's only in here once, and you say it was once.
So now we're arguing about a matter of a couple of days?
You said you only had one person. I know one that came to me and his wife.
The validity of your argument, there is not.
The validity is that you say that there was only one in that community. There is two that I know of right here.
Is it being handled?
I don't know, not from what I see, it looks worse.
Right, because he has until the fifteenth to comply.
I understand that.
You can't make him comply before that date.
I didn't say make him to comply.
Well, then let it go, we're handling it.
That's, that's what happens, a lot of things get let go and that's where we get to where we are.
No one knows anything, we know everything.
Plan development plan.
The concept review from the R and M, who is it doing the concept review?
Why are we covering this every month?
I asked you who? I don't know, maybe it's somebody else, I don't know. Just says, why don't you put on there who's doing the concept review? Maybe that would help, so I wouldn't have to answer the question, I don't know.
I think you'd remember from month to month.
Well, who knows, how do you know it's not a different one? It has to go around your planning, it's gotta come around to us, it's gotta go all kinds of places. How am I supposed to know where the concept is?
You're way ahead of the, first of all, all that was reported...
You could just answer the question, I don't know.
I'm trying to, but you keep talking. As reported numerous times now, that was a simple sketch plan. It was brought into the office and we reviewed it with the engineer, with the applicant, we gave suggestions, it is up to them to resubmit. That's why you see it in the engineer's report, you ask about it in the engineer's report. That's why you see it in the engineer's report, you ask about it in the engineer's report, they give the answer. There's no new update, otherwise there would be another line item on that report. There's no.
You're, you're waiting on them to resubmit it?
Yes.
Then why does it say it's a plan in review? Nobody's reviewing it, you're waiting on them.
It's already.
It says in review.
Updated concept plan or sketch plan once.
I guess the confusion there, it says in review like it's happening right now.
submissions, technically it doesn't even need to be on that report.
Well, plan, concept was reviewed, that, it sounds like that's what happens. So if you can change in to was, maybe that would clear up some confusion.
That has to go through everything, the planning, York County Planning or zoning and.
That's what I'm asking.
Formals.
No, I don't think there's.
Not naming and less.
Yeah.
But yeah, planning commission, double.
Solar, that all went through, zoning hearing? I'm sorry, I was out of town.
Yes.
So we have to approve that as council?
Yeah, it has to go through planning commission. The, the land development plan.
I thought it was planning commission and.
Planning commission or the special exception. I think their planning commission, zoning hearing board, now they come back and they will submit a land development plan to go to the planning commission, York County Planning Commission and referral council.
Oh, so they're kind of doing it twice?
They have to.
Okay.
Have to get the exception first.
Okay. Recreation?
Um, just a couple of quick highlights to reiterate what we talked about last month. Farmer market is again, there is still postponed due to lack of attendance, vendor availability. Tennis, Marion spoke at the rec meeting about how far and wider program comes from. New Freedom, Shrewsbury, Glenox, Stewartstown, New Park, Delta, Fond Road, Parkton and York. So it's really a good, good, uh, good draw and really speaks to the quality of the program. They were talking about the need for some additional equipment. Marion needed some tennis balls and Rick needed some other pickleball supplies, some nets and I think pickleballs themselves. I don't know if you got to.
It's already ordered.
Okay. Thank you. Rick did say that this is one of the best months in recent history, 39 participants in January, netting 400, just over $418. Concerts in the park, August 19th is not going to be the one that will coincide with the Susquehannet Centennial. That date was changed due to the Dog Day conflict and September 23rd for a karaoke concert similar to what they did last year. This year's Veterans Day event will be November 9th, 2023. And we're planning we'll come up in the coming months. Anybody else have any other questions?
Thanks. Representing for business development, AMS and Fire, we already talked about. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we're going to finish with March. Anything for public safety? Susquehannet Centennial Committee?
All the, from what we talked with Jenny and everybody who's up here with the parade and everything, so that's pretty much everything there. Now, did you mention anything about the dance?
I, I haven't yet.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I didn't want to say.
No, that's fine. June, the prom is going to be June 10th. We are going to have a DJ. The DJ has agreed to go back in time and get, pick up some music from 175 years ago. There aren't a whole lot of popular songs, but there's like three, I think, that we can get.
John Philip Sousa?
Yeah. And so that, that dance will be on June 10th. Doors will open at six, dance will be, or the music will be seven, seven to 11. DJ's already booked, community center's already booked. I'm assuming.
What's the date, June, June 10th? That doesn't conflict with anything from school. Like graduation or.
We check, I send it out to a bunch of people and they check on all the different vendors and stuff. So I think we're good. And I guess, do you want to ask if the council that donate the community center use? Or do you want to, I, I mean, I think we should sell tickets for some nominal fee.
Mainly so that we know how many people there are.
I'm sorry?
Mainly so that we know how many people we have.
Yeah, because we don't want five hundred people showing up.
They did have.
Lots of their with people, you know, you never know. And so, and plus, we, the DJ is, I think, $300. I wrote it down.
Six hundred.
$300 and then do we want to pay it? Do we pay for the community center or since it's a Susquehannet Centennial? Does it get donated?
It's donated.
It's donated, okay. Do we take a vote on that?
Major community events.
Okay.
This is in my book.
Do we need to take a vote on, make it formal?
For now?
Huh?
For now, you want to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion that, that we donate the, the community center.
Give all fees.
And waive all fees.
Okay. One motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Take thanks one.
My vote is aye. Other than that, and then we're, we were just, I think we're just going to have snacks, chips and drinks and whatnot, so.
Yeah, you know, I think that.
Bring your own bottle.
Yeah, that's a, did you get a hold of the Cubs about the Cub Scouts? The Boy Scouts or the Scouts for, you were saying about having scouts and being involved?
Yeah, I, I think what we're going to try to do is get the room decorated so that like in that corner, there's 1873. And it'll have like the transportation, New Freedom headlines, world headlines, what's going on? What kind of transportation did they use, favorite bands, whatever. Then over here will be 50 years later and that'll be same thing, you know? Transportation, bands, headlines, and then another corner will be 50 years later. And then maybe today, at least the three quarters.
It's going to be pretty nice. So that'll be the answer, so I'll, I'll probably just take up space.
You have to wear period clothing?
You can. You got some for me?
Women, for which period? We have four periods.
1873.
If you have a blue ruffled tux, we're, we're ready for it.
Yep, that would, that would be nice too. Actually, I can't remember who said, might have been Jenny, might have been Jenny, but if we could get like prom pictures, people's prom pictures, put on the wall. You know, I don't know if people part with them.
Yeah, that maybe, but.
It's not hard to make copies.
Yeah, you can make a copy.
Take pictures of the pictures.
So anyways, I think it's moving in the right direction and everything.
And you know, also, Kristen Phillips told me she comes to the incorporation that, well, their first staff is doing research on the freedom. On, you know, on the history of, so they, so she has, she knows what all happened in incorporation and all that. Because I, that was something I know she had said.
I guess that's about it. Council chamber audio and video?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I'd like to answer.
I, I'll tell you what I'd like to do. But I would hope for the motion, we haven't had a meeting, he goes, getting very sick. Part of what we're looking at doing is for training purposes. You need what, a 60 or 65 inch TV, Andrew? And the stand?
That's all depending on, I mean.
We're going to use, we're going to use it in here and for training. So you're going to want to move it from here to there. Is the 65 inch TV on a portable stand too much to get around?
TVs are eligible. TVs are eligible.
It's the bulk, it's not the weight.
Yeah, I mean, we could put one.
Well, we're looking at two, we're looking at one, one face, originally, we're looking at one facing that direction, one facing us. The one facing us would be on a portable movable wheels that actually will even hold a laptop. So that if he wants to do training with employees for, God knows what else.
Let me ask this, can you work with Andy so that next month we could have something? And whether we put it together ourselves, whether you get Nate to help or whatever. But you know, I think we kind of owe it to everybody to come up with something.
We can do it in portions if that's okay with you, Andrew. I mean, that'll get you where you want to be with training, having meetings in here, being able to use that. I mean, it's, I can show you, I thought I sent it to you. That's why I asked you about Amazon if we.
Oh, yeah.
Because of the tax free, because I can order that through Amazon, it's cheaper than any place else. And the, you put the TV, mount the TV, it's adjustable, high, low, up, down, however you want. You can move it back there. You guys have meetings here on occasion, Zoom, whatever, and you know, use the computers. Then go from that to a larger scenario for the Zoom. Because the Zoom or meetings or whatever we decide to use is going to be the more difficult part where we're going to have to run wires up and over and around.
Why, why do you really try to come back with something this month?
Um, okay, can we, can we, do we have to have a vote to just let me and him go back to doing that rather than have the, the committee?
Well, I mean, if you figure out what you want to do.
Yeah, because the committee's kind of following the course, not.
And you almost, and I don't think it's going to be that much money, I almost did need to come back to council, but I, yeah, I think.
It's going to be about a thousand bucks.
Yeah, well, the TVs are probably going to be.
Probably six, about six hundred bucks now.
Yeah. So, all right, yeah, so yeah, if you guys can put something together for the next month, I'd be here.
Okay, we'll, we'll get together, Andrew?
Yes.
We'll get together, okay. I'll send you what I have, the recommendations from the guy that came in.
Public comment? Who? Oh, oh, yeah. Yeah, I think.
Do you need to add it to the agenda or?
Yeah, we got tasteful occasions lease back, but it has changes. I think there's enough public interest in it. I think I would like to put it on for next month's agenda rather than adding it to this agenda. Because I think, I think what Davey said was it has to be the minimus action. And I, and this isn't going to be, this is going to be a discussion. So we, I mean, do you have this in your packet? There's some things that just, I don't care about putting a date in for the storage area. I'm going to talk about it now, I'm sorry. So anyway, so I think we should table this and bring it up for next month. About it too late to put on the agenda.
When was our lease signed?
We received everything back Thursday.
Thursday of this past week.
Thursday and the business day, yeah.
Should have been done December 31st, it was done Thursday last week.
We have to ask multiple times.
I was begged.
Why are we even considering any of this being their lease has been signed?
They, they took it upon themselves to type that language into the lease and sign it. And there was no way we were going to initial those changes.
Okay, wait a minute. They, they altered the lease that the council approved.
Time out, just for a second. I, I make a motion that we add the tasteful occasions lease changes to tonight's agenda.
Second.
To tonight's agenda? Well, if we're going to talk about it, it's got to be on the agenda.
Okay, I thought you were going to.
Well, I was. But we're going to talk about it tonight, we got, it's got to be on the agenda. So I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? My vote is aye. Okay, go ahead.
They amended their lease that the council approved, put this language in it and gave it back to us?
That's correct.
And, and you're knocking me for what I said earlier about them writing the lease? Are you kidding me? Why did you even accept that?
Well, that, that's, that's not, that's not quite correct.
Absolutely it is. You can't massage that to be something else that is not.
They didn't accept the lease.
No, but they're writing their lease, just like they wrote it before, they're writing it again.
No.
Okay, right here, you just said they did. They put this language in that lease.
Right, and that's why it's back in front of council right now to review.
Right, it's not, it's just like any. It's just like any other negotiation. They didn't like some of the things in the lease. I don't like some of the things in their changes.
I make a motion to reject this that has been presented by tasteful occasions and to make their $1,900 a month retroactive to January 1st.
But you can't do that.
Why can't I do that?
Because they were one month on the previous agreement, correct?
There, yeah, there are.
No, they should have had.
The previous lease said if it's not taken care of, then they go month to month on last year's rate.
So they're, they're, they're going to skate with another $3,000.
Yeah, they are.
Because, because they did not want to sign the lease, it's another.
All right, let, let's, let's go through it a point at a time. I'm, I'm going to just present it real quick and then you guys can decide. There's really no motion on the table other than to look at the changes.
Motion, made a motion to reject.
I've made a motion to reject this from tasteful occasions.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Hope so, Karen.
Motion in a second? Discussion? I'll discuss. I mean, the, the changes, some of the changes that they've made are just things that we've already agreed, just like their, the first one is the storage area in the auditorium will be completed on or before March 31st. That's not a big deal, we were planning on doing it when they signed the lease. Renewal, they're talking about if the lesser, New Freedom Borough does not plan to renew the lease for a minimum of at least one year at the end of this lease. Or if the rent goes up by more than 10%, then they have to give four months' notice. To me, that's not a big deal. I mean, if we want to, if we want to increase the rent by more than 10%, we just have to let them know by September 1st. They gives them four months to say no and we're going to leave. Or then if we don't give them notice by September 1st, then we have to give, they, we basically have to. Well, basically it just says we have to give them four months' notice, that's really the bottom line. So I don't see anything wrong with that either. Four months' notice, I understand they've got a business, they're trying to do weddings, they don't want to be stuck finding a place if we're not going to renew the lease. So I really don't have a problem with one or two. The payment waiver, I, I have a problem. I mean, they're asking to have the previous lease, which was only 380 per month because of all the discounts, continue for January and February. I disagree. I think that the, at a minimum, it needs to be the 790 rate, which takes out any discounts that they were giving.
Correct.
So I would say they could have, in my opinion, again, I would say 790 for January and February. And then the 1,900 would start on March 1st. They have to, you know, the one thing you have to remember is we don't have people lined up to, to rent this place. And as we, as Eric has pointed out, we're not making a ton of money on the community center. This at least gives us, you know, 2,000 times 12, 24, $24,000 a year where it's helping with the community center. So that's my opinion.
They're not beating the door to go anywhere. This needs to be rejected outright. The citizens have subsidized this enough. We're not looking to go kick them out. They will have plenty of time in the next renewal, when it comes around for two years now instead of one year. This needs to be rejected outright.
If, if we reject it, they, they stay how they are month to month?
That the council already-
Yeah, they're still month to month, it-
I don't agree if they stay month to month, I think they have to, I mean, if they reject the lease, they have to leave.
They signed a two-year lease, they signed a two-year lease.
No, they didn't.
He says they signed the last person.
They signed a two-year lease with these changes in it.
Yeah.
How could they amend?
They wrote, just like you would do, just like you would do if you were buying a car.
No, no.
Crossed up, don't tell me no, that's what they did, they negotiated the lease.
This office needs to reprint that lease and say, this is the lease, sign it or go, that's it, they're not going nowhere.
We, we don't know that, though.
They're not going nowhere.
But they have it, anyway, they, they don't have a lot of stuff in here, I mean, all they're asking for is four months' notice, which, that, I mean, that's, that's not an abnormal thing in a lease, and they're not saying they're not gonna pay more, they just wanna know by September first of the year, so it's September, October, November, December, so if we tell them September first, your lease is going up by twenty percent, then they'll give, and then they'll say, okay, we're not renewing, and they'll go find someplace else.
But it is a two-year lease now.
No, because these leases don't get to us till the last minute, so that'll be gone by the time that it gets around to us, so absolutely not, absolutely not, them not signing anything with no deadline, no. Just like the trash contract, here it is, it gets in front of us in October, oh, you gotta do it tonight, these leases here was before us, what, in Oc, was that October two, September?
September.
You know, and then it gets kicked around, kicked around, and then, you know, figure it out in December, well, let's do, no, absolutely not.
You do understand that the trash contact, contract, we were obligated by state law to take the lowest bid, we had no choice.
We didn't have a choice.
We did have a choice, we did have a choice to get them in the, in here, talking to us the beginning of the year, not in October, two months before it was supposed to be finalized. That's the sort of stuff that happens around here a lot, and this is walking yourself right into being hamstrung, absolutely not, there should be no deadline if it goes up more than ten percent, no.
Is this a two-year lease, do they, are they asking for a two-year?
Current lease is a two-year lease.
'Cause we said the one that they-
Did they change that, or is it still two?
'Cause we said that, no, we would only give them one year, was our council discussion.
I think we had said later that we would give them-
Twenty-three and twenty-four.
Yeah, twenty-three and twenty-four.
You have a question?
So we would have to tell them.
What are the odds that come September one, we're even gonna have an idea of what a new rate would be, because we're just starting our budget cycle at that point?
We have two years. I mean, we should be able to figure it out by then, I mean, you know, shame on us if we can't-
Look at the water contract, we missed that.
And this lease still goes from January through December, we're not running this now March through now.
Another example, the water contract, look at that, we got hamstrung into ten more years with the York Water, 'cause nobody saw that, that came around.
How are you hamstrung? You have to give them notice by September first, put it on your calendar, so it pops up and-
You know, that, that'd be nice if it happened that way, but I am not comforted in the lease that it will happen that way, so that doesn't need to be there, and this needs to be rejected outright, was my motion.
And you had a second, so.
The current, current, current monthly rate is?
Current monthly rate is seven ninety.
Seven ninety, and we're going, proposing to go to nineteen hundred?
That's correct.
And they called, they, they paid seven eighty in January and called it a day for January and February.
That's an increase of a thousand, a thousand dollars.
But we're not accepting that, acceptable. I'm sorry?
I'm, I'm just, I'm talking out loud, what if we did, like, kept the two years, agreed to the four months?
The only thing that's up for discussion is what's right here, we've already, we've, the council, I did, I voted no on this whole lease to begin with, you all voted in the lease that didn't matter.
Right now, Ryan is talking, so let's let Ryan finish his thought.
But this is all that's on the table, is this, he's redoing the whole lease of how many years?
He's just talking.
Uh, 'cause I wanna under- I then, I guess if we have a motion, we have the second, then-
But we're in this discussion here, what you're doing is discussing, so you're allowed to discuss.
Yeah, I guess at some point I'd like to look at some kind of a compromise with some of this in the middle, but-
Well, you can, you can amend the motion, you can, um, you know, I mean, that, whatever, whatever you wanna do, I doubt Erica's gonna agree to amend the motion.
Like a, a single item?
The biggest holdup is how the citizens are continuously taken advantage of with the community center, with the leases, this is more just taking advantage of the citizen, now they're already-
What do you want in this?
None of this, print their damn lease out that this council approved, send it back to them and say, sign it.
Okay, that's what you know.
You're not the arbitrator writer of this lease, the council of New Freedom is, not you.
But it's not unusual to have a little back and forth.
This is not a back and forth, they amended the lease and put it in there, that's not, they didn't say, okay, we'll sign it and we'd like to try to do this.
They, they didn't sign it.
They put it in there, he said they put it in there.
They put it in there, they didn't sign it.
And they signed it.
They can put the-
We have-
Well, they, they, yeah, they initialled their changes.
So who's taking you over the barrel, who's in charge here? They are, absurd.
Only if we sign it, only if we sign it.
I think, I think, I think you're missing, Erica, you're missing the big point here. I mean, we're built, we're gonna build the storage area.
I know, who's paying for that?
We are, but it'll be a, an improvement to the-
The four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine people out there are paying for that, too, on top of everything else they've reached into their pockets for, it's absurd, it all needs to go, no.
Well, that's, our public works is doing that, correct?
Yes.
It's still coming out of the people, the people are still subsidizing this for-profit business, it never ends, when is it gonna end?
It's twenty-four thousand dollars a year for two years.
They're already subsidized, two hundred thousand.
I'm just speaking, will you wait 'til I'm done? If you wanna give up twenty-four thousand dollars a year and have it sit vacant, most likely for some period of time, probably months, then I, the people are gonna be subsidizing the community center to the tune of whatever we don't give, this is at least giving us something to work with, and it's, you know, is it an ideal rent? I mean, as Davey said, if you, if you have, if you, if you approach market rates-
They are already getting eighty-four cents a square foot for a for-profit business for a commercial kitchen, and you want more, no.
Okay, there's a motion and a second.
Marsha has a question.
Are they being, um, charged for the depreciation on our equipment?
Yeah, yeah, we, we put the whole plan together and we ran depreciation through-
They didn't change that, right, that they're responsible for maintenance of all equipment and?
I truly can't remember.
Maintenance is not depreciation.
Well, that stuff's all said depreciated now, they're-
Yeah, it's probably, that's, most of it's, but they do pay to get things updated, a lot of the stuff that's in there is theirs, I mean, some of the refrigerators and stuff will just go away if they leave.
But I, I'm saying, if they were to leave, how much would we have to replace? Because, I'm just saying, if they weren't here, it wouldn't have worn out near as fast as it is being used on a daily basis, so, you know, how much is that going to cost to replace everything?
In theory, we don't have to replace any, I mean, we don't have to, I mean, we have a, we would have an oven, and I don't think the fryers have worked in a long time, um, fryers are upstairs and, yeah.
They're using multiple spaces in that community center that they don't even have in their lease.
Well, that's not true anymore, the, the, the spaces are in the lease and we're taking away the spaces that weren't in the lease, so.
They're still in use, right now, today, as we sit here, they are still in use.
But that's, we're giving them, that's why we're building the storage area, we're taking them, taking all that other area away from them, and we're, and we're, anyway, there's a motion and a second, what's your pleasure?
I mean, we can change part of it instead of just saying no, right?
Well, I think the first two are no brainers, the last one, I, I don't agree with doing that at all, it should-
I agree.
It should be the seven ninety for two months, and then go-
But I agree, you go back to the seven ninety?
And then go to the nineteen hundred after March first, starting March first, right?
Well, can we just send that back to them like that?
Well, I mean, Andy can retype whatever and send it back to them and say, this is our best proposal.
Print out the lease that the council already authorized.
I think, I, there's, my opinion for council is, there has been discussion, there is a motion to reject and return the lease, and I think that needs to be voted on at this time, I'm, obviously, you can't call the question, but I think-
Well, we're still in discussion, okay.
Well, that's-
I entertain a motion to call the question.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of rejecting?
You said entertain, so someone needs to make the motion.
Oh, you seconded it, I'm sorry.
So moved, second, yes, second.
Anyway.
All the question?
I, I have a, do I have a second, a second?
Yeah, you have a second, yeah.
No.
You made the motion.
I'm sorry, it doesn't, I'm, it's not working out.
Somewhere wake up and do a second.
I've brained in.
Hold on.
Hold second now, call the question.
All right, all in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed, say no.
So, wait, wait, stop.
They, they're calling the question to end discussion.
We're the two votes on your-
Yes, yeah, so to send this back, reject this, print out their lease and say, sign this.
We're, we're calling the question.
That's what we're voting on, okay.
So you wanna call the question?
Oh, you just did.
Well, I don't think everyone, you said, wait, wait, wait. All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye, okay.
You've never done that before, Davey's over there, he just said, I called the question, and then you, you take the vote, I don't know why we had to do that this time.
There's two different, well, two different motions.
We, we have to call the, never mind, anyway. Motion on the table is to reject this outright as opposed to going back with any kind of a counter. All in favor of rejecting it outright, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Aye.
How many did I, can I say, no, vote of hands.
Roll call vote, I, could you roll call?
Ayes.
Hands are fine.
Okay, roll call, Dave?
Opposed?
Post.
Well, I'm also opposed, that would leave it up to you, Miss Moore. Sorry.
Here's your time to sign, Kim.
Oh, thank you.
You have the roll call?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Rejected. Rejected.
So you would reject?
Yes or no?
Reject what?
So then their original lease to have them sign it, that's what you're saying?
'Cause the, the motion was to reject it.
Reject it.
You can't, if you reject the rejection, you're not rejecting it. So just to be clear, you're saying we're going to not, not send any, anything back?
Nope.
Okay.
And they're gonna be sent their original lease that this council produced, or-
They're sent the first one.
Other part?
Yep.
Told to sign it.
Okay. We've given them an offer. Any other public comments? By once, twice, I would entertain a motion to-
I have a public comment, I have a mayor comment, real quick, I could probably do this outside, is it possible, you, you had told me you thought there was a way to get to our monthly calendar?
Yeah.
Is there a way? Like, if I wanna see if, you know, the-
Community center.
Community center is booked, or the Lions Club is booked?
We're working on that, we're working on a public calendar that will be, a lot of reservations, so we're going, yes, we're getting it.
Okay, all right, right now, there isn't anything that-
We only have that internally, we only have that internally, and the hope is to bring that on the website, have it more public facing, so if someone wants to book a community center, it'll be Saturday, whatever, that they can see that, no, they can back there, and that way they can-
I'm looking at it, I think it's on the top.
I'm moving it during.
Andrew, I'm looking at, if I have- That's, that's the only reason.
You can make any changes to it.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, if you can, yeah, I would like to do that, because I'm here, I'm up at the fire hall, Thursday nights, I will ever make sure it's locked, I probably do it three other nights a week, I'll come out if I'm bored, and stuff.
Appreciate the help, so, maybe I'll-
I mean, I'll, I'll check it, you know?
I'm a good employee. Oh, yeah, no, I appreciate that. Are you guys okay seeing this resolution without turning itself, you know, subsidizing What?
Oh, no, 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 no.